Greetings, I am Nicole Everett, the host of Conversations with Nicole. And it is Tuesday, August 11, 2020, and we are having a virtual meet and greet, a virtual meet and greet. And tonight's virtual meet and greet is featuring Audrey Lewis, candidate for Gaston County Public Schools Board of Education. She's actually the current District One representative, and she is seeking reelection and has asked me to help her with a meet and greet tonight. So, some of you may know her, others of you may not, but this is a great opportunity for you to get to know her. District One in Gaston County represents Havana and Midway, and she's gonna come on and tell you all about who she is and why she's running, and the unfinished business that she plans on taking care of. So, before I bring her on, I want to hear where you all are tuning in from. So, in the comments, put your city and your state. Hopefully, most of you that are tuning in are from the Gaston County area, Midway, Havana, Quincy, Chattahoochee, what have you. But put in the city and the state that you are tuning in from, so we can give you a shout out. This is a virtual meet and greet, so just imagine it's almost as if she was in one of your homes, and you were maybe meeting her for the first time, but we're doing it virtually. So, any questions you have, any comments you may have around Gaston County's education system, and the things that you are interested in seeing or are pleased with, by all means, we want to hear from you. So, in the comments, let me know, who's tuning in with us? Who's watching us tonight? Let me know, let me know, in the comments, where are you tuning in from? So, while I'm waiting on that, I'm gonna go ahead and bring on Audrey. So, welcome her with me.
Yay!
Hey, how are you? Good evening, good evening, welcome, welcome. So, tell the folks who may not know who you are, where you're from, what you do, and why you are running to be a re-elected to Gaston County Schools District One.
Thank you so very much, Nicole. I'm Audrey Diana Lewis, and I was born in Fort Knox, Kentucky, Army brat to Sergeant First Class Roger Lewis, and Mary Harris Lewis, former teacher at Greensboro Elementary School. I attended Havana Elementary School when we moved from Europe back to the States, and my mom and dad wanted to settle down in Havana, and out in a little place called Jamison, out in the country. But I also attended Havana Northside High School, '73. We're gladiators, proud, proud graduate. Also, I went to Florida A&amp;M University, a Bachelor's of Science in Speech Pathology, and a minor in Psychology.
All right, yes, yes.
And also FSU, I went ahead and got my master's. Yeah, no, no, too. Got my Master's of Science degree in Speech Communications, and I was in the classroom for nine years before I became an administrator, and from the classroom to the boardroom, here I am. And I would like, I have, it's a new, it's a new decade, and I have a new vision and a clear mission for the success of Gaston County School students and our employees, so we can have success.
Awesome, now how long have you been serving currently?
This is my second term, and I didn't think I was gonna do a third term, but unfinished business, and I said, oh, I tried to wiggle out of it, but no, something kept pulling me saying, no, you have some unfinished business to attend to, so that's what I'm gonna do. That's why I need everyone to get out and vote on August the 18th for Audrey Lewis.
All right, so tell us about the unfinished business that you see that needs to be taken care of during this third term.
Well, I will say I have three out of the five I'll share with you. The budget, and that's to recover all dollars from FEMA and the insurance companies from the destruction and the devastation that took place during Hurricane Michael in 2018. On my flyer, I say rebuild versus repair, or do we patch our old facilities? And then when I talk about literacy, literacy is a priority, because beginning with our early learners, that's what I would like for us to do, our pre-K through third graders, and those other targeted grades to increase our graduation rate now and in the future. And then finally, this pandemic puzzle, COVID-19. I want to ensure schools are safe, clean, and healthy environments with our students, for our students, and also, we want to take care of the whole child, so we want to offer that mental health counseling as well, to not only our students, but our employees and their parents.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, COVID is a big issue, and you know, the governor has been, you know, basically stating that there's a mandate for students to return to the classroom, and you know, I know it's concerning, not only for the students, but their parents, not only for the parents, but the teachers and some of the other school personnel. So, what's your, your thought around that? And what's Gaston County Schools' position been on the return to the classrooms for this school?
Well, when we started, you know, it started up back when we were out for spring break, so we quickly went to remote learning, and that gave us a feel of how we needed to, you know, better prepare ourselves for what we're offering now to our parents. In fact, I have a document that I would like to invite everyone to go to on our webpage, Gaston County webpage, and this is a document that we submitted to the Department of Education to be approved by them. They gave us the instructions and the mandate that we had to come back, brick and mortar, meaning in school, or remote learning, distance learning. So, we've sent in a very innovative plan to do just that. We have protocols and different procedures in place, but nothing is guaranteed because of, you know, the day-to-day changes that we're seeing, especially with the spikes in the COVID cases that we're seeing over in Gaston County.
Right, so tell the folks, what District One, what's that area cover? I mentioned Havana and Midway, but you can tell them more specifically what?
If you're coming out of Tallahassee, everything, and you're going north on 27, it's everything on the right. And then, if you just look over to your left, I pick up Gibson, and that's when I go down 270, and they know where that is, and if you turn on 159, you're headed to Midway. You have all of Midway. Now, for us Havana, oh, let me name some of the communities. Havana, we're talking Gibson, Rich Bay, Concord, that we call Coon Bottom, of course, on the Glade. Let's see, it's so many communities on the right side if you're going north to Georgia, if you're going north, headed toward Georgia. So, I have a very large district, we're talking about 8,000 voters.
Okay, wow, wow, wow. So, let's talk about some of the things that you have done over your tenure that, you know, you feel like are commendable, and are things that people maybe should know, you know, in terms of why you want to be re-elected?
Well, number one, I have over 40 years of educational experience, and in fact, this month, August, marks 43 years I've been in education. And believe it or not, Nicole, I did not want to go into education. My mom was a teacher, and she wrote lesson plans on the weekend. I wanted to be a comedian and make people laugh. So, I get an opportunity to do that when I'm doing trainings with a program that I developed, Different Levels of Parental Involvement, Delophie. Everybody said, that's the Delophie lady, and this is the book I wrote on parents, for parents and for educators, because I saw a need, and that journey of wanting to be a comedian kind of steered me down that road. But inclusive of that is, I was fortunate enough to bring over a million dollars to our district during my tenure, and we were able to give parenting, parent training. Also, we were able to buy an RV that can go out into the rural communities. We would go to churches, have books in the back, of course, but we had resources for parents, pastors. Our faith-based community invited us in with open arms, and I must say, they are the cornerstone for us in Gaston County.
Wow, that's sweet, so a mobile unit that went out into the community and distributed books to the children, but also in conjunction with the faith-based community.
Oh, yes, I went to different churches, I would call the pastor, I asked if I could come along with my staff, and we would go, and after church, they would come out and take a tour of the bus. Some of the older gentlemen said, can we take it fish? And I said, no, no, let's get some resources for our children. So, that was very popular, but I would like to say that I was able, along with my other board members, and I don't like to say I, 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 because it's a team approach, together, everyone achieves more. We were able to promote and give pay raises for all district employees. We were promoted and gave teachers two bonuses, and also, $2,500 for recruitment and retention dollars were given to certified teachers. So, if they didn't have it by October, we said, if you, if you have it by October, you can get it in your December check. So, that kind of helped us with getting more certified teachers helping us. I promoted literacy with our churches, dropping out bags of books and boxes of books to our churches to give out to our young ones, and also working with the National Hookup of Black Women, the Gaston chapter, and doing that. And also, working with the Havana Magnet School Book Club, and getting books for those young ones there. And then, I must say, these have been, these four years has been very, very concerning. Now, starting out with, we did a lot of reconfiguring our schools, and then that was in 2017. As soon as after I took my oath, we were into that, meeting out in the communities about closing some schools and combining schools. And then we went into the Parkland shooting. And then, you know, we were talking about all of this violence going around, well, in Florida, in Parkland, and then we had a mandate to ensure that we had a security officer or guardian in every school. And of course, we didn't get as much safe and drop preschool monies, and that's where that would come from, but we had to do that, and we did it. Also, Vista volunteers that came in, and we didn't have to pay them. Of course, it got to a point where they were like, mm, you all have, have it too good. But we brought, we brought in Vista volunteers to serve as parent involvement specialists. So, I'm very proud of that. And one thing that I hold dear to my heart, I was a victim advocate in Midway, working along with their police department, and a former foster grant, foster parent. I had three little ones when I had my little one. I'm the mother of two adult children, and yes, I, I just hold that dear to my heart.
Yeah, that, that is very special, and it's, you know, takes a special type of person to, you know, give in that way, so, you know, that is quite commendable. Now, let's go back to this unfinished business. So, you know, we talked about COVID-19, and you know, I'm sure that there are some budgetary concerns, because if the students aren't in the classroom full-time, then that's gonna affect some of the funding that comes to you, correct?
Exactly, well, we have, we've gotten some relief, and when I say some relief, it's called the CARES Act, and the CARES Act is giving us funding to be able to buy that equipment, sanitizers, and all of the necessary things we need to do to disinfect our schools and all. And we have a very robust plan, that's why I encourage everyone to go out to our website and look at the protocols and our procedures, or how we're gonna try to serve the whole child in the best way we can. And I haven't forgotten about my employees either, because this has touched everyone. Everyone knows someone or related to someone. I'm almost afraid to answer my phone, you know, on a daily basis with sad news. But we had to go forward with this plan, as I said. If we had not, they said that they would take our federal funding. And our federal funding is really what sustains Gaston County, just because of our population, of the students that we serve. There, you heard of free and reduced lunch might be an easier way for me to explain it to the audience, because we're right there at the poverty level, a little bit below, and sometime a little bit above that, and that's the situation. We feed our children breakfast and lunch free, and we are continuing feeding them until August the 13th, because a lot of our children come to school to get that nutritionist, you know, full meal, and also snacks and after, in the after-school programs as well. So, they rely on us for a lot of those kinds of things as well.
So, basically, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying all schools in Gaston are Title I schools?
Yes, they are. All schools are Title I, except, we have Gaston Elementary Magnet School, and they're the only school that's not. But all of the schools, we rely on that federal funding. That federal funding, and that's something we put in our plan, that's taking care of my ESOL, my English speakers of other languages, my exceptional student population. And then there was some other assurances that we had to do. But those federal programs, they help us with our professional learning for our teachers, and also for our parents in some instances. So, we have a lot of money that comes from the federal government that help us do what we need to do on a day-to-day basis. So, we went to, well, first of all, we, we did a parent survey. We wanted to know how our parents felt about this, and we also, we interviewed our employees. We wanted to know how teachers felt about this, because some of them have underlying issues, some of them are just afraid or have older relatives at their house, as some of our kids do. So, we took all of that into consideration as well.
Are you aware of any retention issues with teachers or staff as it relates to, you know, COVID and not wanting to be, you know, exposed? Are you aware of any retention issues as it relates to that?
Not yet, we're doing our staffing now. We're doing our staffing plans now, as we are counting those numbers, I should say, of the parents that have chosen that innovative remote learning. We have 3,500 parents that have chosen that mode of learning for their child.
Okay.
And the only, the only, the only thing about that is, we have some of our students that live in remote areas, and the connectivity, you know, getting on that Wi-Fi. So, we've decided to, in the meantime, you know, to have buses with Wi-Fi's on there, so those, so they can, and park them in different communities, so our students can get online.
So, the bus will act as a hotspot, if you will, so that they can have access to the internet? I like that idea.
We're trying to do all we can, and we have so much support from our other leadership around the county. We had a leadership meeting on yesterday, and each mayor and each city manager was in the room. It was no more than 30, we were socially distanced, and we had our hand sanitizers and our masks on, and it was a very good meeting. Mr. Shawn Wood from the Sheriff Department led that from the emergency management team. And then we had Dr. Adrian Cooksey, the director of our Health Department, who's been working hand-in-hand, and as we developed this plan, this innovative plan, the Health Department has been side-by-side with us. And as I talked to my other board members around the state, they say, you all are very blessed to have that in place. So, sometimes small towns give you, you know, give you something, a little bit more, you know, nurturing.
Absolutely, I mean, that's, that's great. Hopefully, the larger municipalities can take, he, take lessons from you all in terms of an ability to try to work together and work things, things through. And I'm so pleased to hear that the Health Department is working side-by-side with you all, because I think, you know, you all are educators, you are not health professionals, so you don't know.
We rely on them, we rely on them.
We need their expertise, so kudos to you all for doing that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So, literacy and early learning, tell me, you know, what's your thoughts on that in terms of what you'd like to see in this upcoming term to improve it?
I would like for us to focus more on our pre-K through third-grade population, and then look at the data with those other grade levels. When I started looking at the data, data, I saw where the students that were entering high school, they were two grade levels behind in reading, and I was like, wow, it's harder to catch up. So, why not start out at the beginning? I always call my pre-K the appetizers. I said, the way parents see you treat them in this area, they're gonna feel that, you know, companion and partnership. So, let's start at the pre-K level, K, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, because we know that third grade is when that child, that student starts taking the Florida Standard Assessment, and if they do not pass, they cannot go further. And I know most people have heard that that's how, they did a lot of research on how they will build prisons later on. So, that's, and that's a state, of course, mandate that they have to pass that. So, let's focus on those early learners. So, when we get them through middle school, and they're getting ready to get into high school, we won't have that problem if we really focus on literacy at those early ages.
Okay, and then, high school retention, or, well, graduation rates, really? How are you, you know, trying to push students and their, their parents or families to help them graduate, to make it across that graduation finish line?
And it is, and, and you know, and it's very challenging. We, we came up with a lot of different strategies to help a lot of our students, given them, I mean, when we were counting who was gonna walk across that stage in our virtual graduation we had for Gaston County High School, which was wonderful, it was now to the last minute, because some kids needed to finish up a few things. And I think the closer we got to that, they were like, you all really care? It's like, yes, we really care about you, we want to do everything possible. We had Saturday tutorial programs for them. We encouraged them to take the ACT, take the SAT, and take it multiple times. Sometimes, we would, you know, give them a waiver to take it. But I encourage parents, even as early as middle school, start thinking about those things, because if your child has failed the FSA twice, then that particular score on the ACT or SAT can take the place of that, and they can move forward. All children are not good test takers. Do you believe the FSA is fair? No, I do not, but that's what we have to work with, and that's how people kind of measure our ability.
Right, 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 okay. So, what are your needs for your campaign? You know, tell, tell the folks, like, how they can reach out to you, and what things that you, you feel like you need in order to be successful?
I need them to go vote. I need them to go vote, I need them to go vote, I need them to go vote. They can mail it in, we have early voting going on, even down on the weekends, and then last, well, we have souls to the polls on Sunday, and the polls will be open, these different locations, and then in my area, the public library open in Havana, and then in the city of Midway, it's the City Hall. And then you can also go by the Supervisor for Election. So, there are different places that you can, you know, go and cash your vote, and your vote is your voice. Your vote is your voice, just like my cousin, John Robert Lewis said, get in some good trouble, go vote, go vote. But that's what I need, I need, I need us to come together and lay all our other issues aside, especially during this pandemic, I call it a pandemic puzzle, and work side-by-side and help each other, that teamwork. I ask people to join the AAA team, and that's a safe environment, that's academics, and that's accountability, and that's what we're gonna have to do. But I need you to get out there and vote, vote early, vote by mail, take someone to the poll, and please, vote for Audrey Lewis.
Yes, 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 now, how can they connect with you?
They can connect with me on Facebook, I have a 2020 Vision on Facebook. It's a new decade, a new vision, and a clear mission. And they also can get me on different levels of parent involvement, or they can just come to Audrey Lewis, my page.
Okay, do you have a website or no?
No.
Okay, that's fine, so Audrey Lewis on Facebook and 2020 Vision also on Facebook? Yes, okay.
Doubles, yes.
Good, now, as we get down to the wire, are there any events that you will be involved with in the community, whether virtually or, you know, in person, coming up?
Not this weekend, everything is centered around staying home, distancing yourself, washing your hands, but no, I'll be out and about though, campaigning and doing my waving in my different areas, but nothing that has been locked in. I save that time to be able to concentrate on trying to campaign, because it's been hard trying to really do that day-to-day job that we need to do and focus on the campaign. I said, that comes second, we gotta save lives first, and that's what I truly feel and believe that we need to do.
So, they may see you out on the street waving your sign?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes.
So, the polls, is that gonna be at a specific location in Gaston County?
It'll be at those same locations.
Okay, right, so definitely check with your supervisor, with the Gaston County Supervisor of Election, those of you who are watching and are registered to vote in Gaston County, because they will have all of the information on the times and the locations that you can go vote early, and as well as turning your mail-in ballot, as well as know when souls to the polls is taking place. So, that will be on Sunday, Sunday is the last day for early voting, and then next Tuesday, a week from today, August 18th, is the actual election day. So, please, get out and vote, get out and vote. So, we've been in COVID, and I tend to ask people this when I talk to them, both on the broadcast as well as, you know, just in regular conversation, what have you been watching since we've been in the pandemic? Is there anything, any show that you've been watching that you've been maybe binge-watching?
Too much of CNN. But I had to do a balance, I had to do a balance, I had to do a balance, and I was telling one of the integrity guys at the leadership meeting, he said, have you found that balance yet? I said, yes, you watch a little CNN, you watch a little local news, and then you turn on Andy Griffin and watch Barney Five say nip it in the book. But you have to, you have to give yourself a balance, because this is very stressful on a lot of us, and it's scary. It's something that we've never faced before, and we're gonna have to do it together to keep everyone safe, we're gonna have to do it together.
Yeah, I, I can't consume too much of the news, it's just, woo, I, I watch like one little bit of it per day, and then I'm done, because it, it can be overwhelming. So, I try to encourage my parents to not watch as much news. I don't know, they just feel like they gonna miss something, they gotta be. But, you know, I think, like you're saying, just spurts of it here and there, and, you know, keep it moving, and keep your good mental health. You know, you mentioned mental health, but I think that is huge in this time especially. You know, having someone that you can talk to, being sure you, you know, rest, you eat, you get some form of exercise or movement, and, you know, just take really good care of yourself, so, you know, can't say enough about that.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, well, anything you want to say in closing? And we didn't really get any questions, this was a virtual meet and greet, so I was hoping we would have, would have had more comments or questions. There are some folks that did comment that you are doing a marvelous job there in Gaston County, and that they also like that bus being the hotspot idea. But anything that you'd like to say in closing, Audrey?
I would just like to say that being I would just like to say that being a parent advocate, the single most important determinant of a child's success in school and ultimately throughout life is not family status, education level, income, nor is it IQ. But it's whether or not that family is involved in that child's education. And I always withhold to that philosophy, as I do with my elected position. Fair, firm, focused, and friendly. That's who Audrey Lewis is.
Wonderful, all right, you all heard it. So you have officially met and greeted Ms. Audrey Lewis, Gaston County School Board, District One, representing Midway and Havana. Yes, so please, 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 you know, get to know her better. And hopefully, you got to know her better and what she stands for. And she would love to have your vote. All right, all right, well, we are going to say good night, and we will see y'all next time.
Thank you so much.